Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. To the commissioners, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood, Jr. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting is hereby called to be held on Thursday, March 5th, 2015, commencing at 5:30 PM. This call meeting will be held at the regular meeting place of the Palaca City Commission at the Commission Chambers 201 North Second Street. The purpose of the meeting is to authorize former city manager Michael Zimbor's contract termination payment and to appoint an interim city manager. This meeting is now called to order. We will have an invocation. We would ask Commissioner Campbell to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Will everyone please stand?
Thank God, we thank you for this day, a day that we've never seen before. Your burned new grace and mercy bestowed upon us, God. We ask as we go forth throughout this meeting, God, give us the wisdom and knowledge, God, to handle the city's business effectively, in your name, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill? Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Mr. Borum?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Norwood?
Present.
Mr. President, Mayor Campbell.
Thank you. We will now have public comment at this time. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here for public comment? Please state your name and address for us.
My name is Linda Kreider. I live at 116 Kirkland Street, Palaca, Florida. I wanted to address tonight commissioners and congratulate you. I wanted to also give a little background in terms of when I moved here eight years ago. I moved, I retired from the University of Florida where I taught urban planning. And as Mary knows, and James knows, I moved here because I, as urban planner, saw Palaca as a wonderful place to come and live and retire to. And I wanted to be here and be part of what appeared to be happening. The unfortunate crash of the market in the next two years, economic decline, was unfortunate everywhere in Florida. But Palaca managed to hang on and bounce back, continue to get grants, continue to look forward, and has done so many number of things that have been in a positive direction. So I come before you tonight hoping that we can work together as a community to continue the good work that has started, to continue to look at the riverfront as our centerpiece. For when people come over the bridge, that's what they look at and identify as Palaca. So the good work that's taking place there, I believe, is critical. I think it can be matched with other things that are desires and the vision of the commission. And I'm hopeful that I can be a part of that. I'd like to propose another thought. When I worked with Willie Boynton some in the last effort to help with the Trails Initiative, and at the time when he stepped down, Jonathan Griffin, who had worked with quite a bit of different public works initiatives, I asked him, "Won't you throw your hat in the ring?" And Jonathan said, "No, I'm not ready." I said, "When will you be ready?" He said, "Give me some more experience." I think Jonathan has proved himself in this town. He's from this town. He has proved he can work with the staff. He has proved, and he didn't put me up to this. I just told him I was gonna do it. Because I think he needs to be looked at and given a chance, perhaps, as an interim city manager. And the concept of being able to use the city manager's salary to be able to use that funds, give Jonathan somewhat of a raise to take on more responsibilities, but then have that additional money to be able to do some of the programs that seem to be so vital in moving the city forward. So I'd like for you just to consider that. Perhaps already a decision has been made, but I wanted to come forward tonight and say I'd like to support Jonathan. I'd also like to let you know that I believe the things that are happening in Palaca with ecotourism, we have an incredible trail system here that is going to be 100 miles all the way from Lake Butler across the bridge through Palaca to St. Augustine. That is really going to have a tremendous effect on this town. And it's marching forward. There's a good group of people who are also planning events associated with that, you know, that are from efforts that have been initiated and carried on by groups of the Hoover Sam Carr. There's also a group that I helped form, which is called the Putnam Wobezam Trails Citizen Support Organization, that all volunteer, but has actually put on hundreds of events, kayakking, bicycling, hiking, equestrian events, for all over this county and in the city. And will continue to work tirelessly to make those initiatives happen. So I'd like to just bring that forward tonight and hope that could be some really positive ways that the community can continue to work together. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Item number two on the agenda is a resolution authorizing payment of termination and severance, aggregate severance pay to former city manager Michael Zimbor for the terms of the employment agreement dated July 12th, 2015.
Resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing payment of termination and severance pay, aggregate severance pay, to former city manager Michael J. Zimbor for the terms of his employment agreement, which presented him to on July 12th, 2012.
So there's a motion on the floor, a second by Commissioner Borum. Is there any discussion? And I think, maybe Mr. Holmes, can you chime in a little bit on this?
The contract with Mr. Zimbor provided for specific terms of a severance. What I understand Matt did was just basically track the terms of severance. I spoke with Matt about one particular term that we thought might have, be subject to a couple of different interpretations, and agreed on an interpretation of that, which resulted in the calculation on some of the benefit issues. The salary issue is a fairly straightforward computation, as I understand it. And the contract essentially calls for this payout in the nature of a severance package. I guess you could refer to it in a number of different ways, but with the understanding that it would, that the city manager would accept the package in lieu of any other claim that he could otherwise have asserted against the city. And as I said, the contract was something that was done and executed when he first came on board with the city. It was our attempt to contemplate issues that could arise in the future and provide the city with, and actually him also, he was a participant in the contract negotiations. It was something that I think the previous city commission in hiring him directed us to move forward with, attempt to negotiate and solidify a contract. That happened. This was the result of that. And the terms that are set forth in your resolution are essentially the terms that were in the contract.
End of the question.
Do we have the money to do this with and how are we coming to it? I think that people need to hear how we plan to take care of it.
Mr. Reynolds?
Matt Reynolds, finance director. I spoke with the police chief earlier this week because we were looking for some different areas where this payout may come from, and we came up with enough funds with the resignation of the police chief and not filling of that position, if that remains throughout this fiscal year, as well as some positions that they have open via attrition and some other personnel changes that they've had this fiscal year. There's enough savings there to cover.
And also the contingencies as well.
We do have a $62,000 contingency in the budget that could be used towards it, but hopefully more than enough savings if the police chief position stays open for the remainder of the fiscal year.
I guess the lump sum total pay, lump sum, not total, well, the, his vacation, well, his salary, I think it equals up to $61,000, I believe?
Sixty-one, one oh two seventy.
And the rest would be paid in as a benefits over six months.
Right, correct.
That is correct.
I can't get this to open, that's fine.
As long as we can pay the bills.
There you go. Thank you. Oh, we're fine, we're fine. Is there any more discussion?
Call for quick.
Anything else?
Seeing none, we'll call the question. Roll call, please. Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion passes, but voted five to zero. Item number three on the agenda is appointment of interim city manager. And I'll take the lead on this. In light of the circumstances- That transpired during our last meeting, we found ourselves in kind of an odd situation. We have our, Mr. Reynolds has a resignation that he's considering at this point. I think that would be an accurate depiction of where we are at this point. He's, right now, he's tentatively scheduled for April, as far as the resignation is concerned. He's considering where he's gonna be from that point. So it puts us in a position where we're without a finance, we're possibly without a finance manager in April, and we're without a city manager. So I called on, I called over and I started talking to Alan Bush, who was former city manager at one time, who has a background in finance, he had some other areas. And I asked him, and I kind of explained the situation that we were in, and I began to ask him, would that be something that he'd be interested in, in coming in and working as either a consultant or as an interim city manager? Mr. Bush indicated that he would be interested in working in any capacity he could to help the city, but as a retiree, he didn't want to do anything long-term. He would do some things to help. I've spoken to Mr. Reynolds, who's kind of, he's in a position where, considering some of the pending moves that are coming within his department, he's, he could find himself severely overworked, without much staff to help him out. And so they're making adjustments as necessary to get certain things done now. I think the experience and expertise of Mr. Bush would be beneficial, and this is just my opinion. I think we can have discussion if anyone else has thought of any other people or any other person who may be interested in that position. But I thought Mr. Bush's experience would be good. We talked about a period of sixty days max as an opportunity for him to come in and kind of help Mr. Reynolds out with the situation as we are. I think that would give us a sufficient amount of time to do a search for city manager, and it would also allow Mr. Bush, who was a finance director previously, prior to becoming a city manager, to have an opportunity to go over some things with Mr. Reynolds, and while we're going through our search. My suggestion, my recommendation, or at least from my standpoint, would be that we look at appointing Alan Bush as interim city manager, to allow him to get a true assessment of where we are financially within the city, to be able to make certain recommendations, and also to be able to have the ability to fill in those vacancies that we have with our current city manager. That was, that was my thought process. If anyone has anything else, just kind of talk about it, and maybe you guys can let me know what your thoughts are.
I have a comment. I think I've been here long enough and I work with Mr. Bush, and he's really a beating cow. If we, if we do that, Mr. Bush in here, he'll know, he'll keep us on task. He never lets you spend any money. So he be, he be, he is as tight as it been. Right now, we're working through problems. He knows, he knows how the system is, and he kind of talks to us and listens to. And that's what we weren't getting from the last city manager. I think, though, a month, thirty days may not be long enough for us to find an adequate city manager. We might have to go two to three months to find him, because you have to advertise, then you have a search committee, and then you bring them back to us, and they get interviewed. So it takes a little time to get that right person there. I would hope that Mr. Reynolds would have second thoughts and not leave us. I've been trying to get him to look at that. I think he's been good for us, and he's been responsible, and he's done what we've asked him to do over a period of time. So that's my feeling.
And I'll say this, I asked Mr. Bush to come to the meeting tonight, and Mr. Bush, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, because I don't, I don't know, I know that two of the commissioners have worked with you before, and I don't know if Commissioner Borum or Commissioner Campbell are familiar with you at all. And maybe you can kind of give them a very condensed breakdown of who you are and what's been your position with the city over the years.
I came with the city in 1977 as finance director. I was here until eighty-one, I became city manager. And the time I was here, we had smaller staff. I did both, I acted as the finance director for some time, and then we appointed somebody, but I handled the budget entirely during that period. I also handled personnel, pretty much everything. It was a, I'd like to say it was almost a one-man show for a long time. It's quite hard. Later on, we were able to bring additional staff in, and I think that, in the two months that I would be here, I think we can, I can sit down with Matt and we can run through those budgets, see if there's any savings, if there's anything we need to do to change and improve. I noticed a couple of things that I didn't necessarily approve of, that I felt like could be brought to the attention of the commission. Now, I always ran an open-door policy, so if anybody up here, if I was here there two months, I would expect anytime you had a question, or you wanted something explained, please come into my office, open all the time, and I will be happy to sort it out.
And are there any other questions for Mr. Bush? I know the million-dollar question is, we talked about, we talked about what his compensation expectations would be during that period, and I think that where we are, especially considering where we are financially at this point, we talked about those numbers, and we talked about having that be something that would be viable for the city. And in talking to Mr. Bush over that, we came up with a number that would be significantly less than what he was making when he retired. And so it was, it was roughly, it came out to be right about $1,725 per week, which equated to roughly $7,500 bucks a month, which would put us at about $15,000, $15,000 if he was to stay for an entire two-month period. So we talked about that as a suggested salary for what he would have in place. I think those numbers put us in a position, based upon some of the savings that we'll have from the police department, where our contingency would still be less than what we've already been able to adjust throughout that process. But also, the other thing is, is if we decided on week three that we wanted to move in another direction, that contract could be terminated, and he would only be paid for the work that he'd be done, that he would have done at that time.
I made that clear, that anytime we can cut it off. I've got all kinds of irons in the fire, and I'm doing this because I do love this city. I spent a lot of time here, and I'm very much interested to help it in any way I can.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any question for Mr. Bush. I've worked with Mr. Bush before, and we've got a pretty good working relationship. And in fact, he remains, I think, one of my, one of my friends. But, you know, I think when I left here on Thursday night, I think we had appointed Matt, and I don't know whether, as interim manager, and we said that he could, we said that he could handle, we didn't necessarily appoint him, but we said that he could actually handle the responsibilities and that kind of thing. And my question would be, and I understand your rhyme and reasons for thinking it was very logical thinking and whatnot, but my question would be, has anything changed between now and then?
No, sir. The one thing that, the only thing that changed in, within that process, is the fact that we've had two resignations, and you're two, you're down two people in the finance department. We're down two people in the finance department. And my recommendation, I think in any capacity, whether we bring Mr. Bush in as a consultant or we bring him in as an interim finance director, it's still, it's six in one, you know, it's six in one hand and half dozen other. But I think that there's an opportunity to bring Mr. Bush in. It'll help relieve some of the, some of the obligations that Mr. Reynolds has as he's transitioning, dealing with that. I still believe that Matt Reynolds is more than capable of handling the job as the interim. I do think that he's getting to a point where he's getting ready to start the budget season. There are gonna be some things that are gonna be hot on his plate, and he's gonna need the extra help. And also, I think that Mr. Bush would be a good person for him to be able to bounce ideas off of as well.
I guess I would just like to hear, I guess I would just like to hear from Matt, just, you know, so that, you know, I'm familiar.
Just for some background info, I've spoken with the mayor about, you know, his idea earlier this week, and, you know, in light of the resignations, just as the mayor said, I think it would be, you know, beneficial to have somebody else here to kind of help out, because it's gonna be very, very busy. We've got to finish the annual financial statements this month, and then budget starts immediately, usually immediately after that. But if Mr. Bush is here, we may get started early.
All right, thank you. I know I read Article Three in our chart, I think that's what, that's what was in our, what was in our agenda that I don't have.
Yes, sir.
And I know it talks about a competent, qualified individual as well, that we have to point out. And I guess my point is, I don't think that really we have but two of those in this room today that I would feel confident, you know, and that's Matt Reynolds and Mr. Bush. And based on what Matt just said, I would move that we appoint Mr. Bush as the interim manager.
Let me just add, if I can, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to interject, too, that budget and understanding the money and handling it is one of the most important things that you can do for any city to keep your, keep your pulse on what's going on throughout the year. And I plan to work, a couple of months that I'm here, I plan to work very closely with Matt. He and I will probably be spending a lot of time together.
One other question before, before. Have we looked outside to see if it's anybody else that would be? I know it's a motion on the floor, without a second.
Do we have a second? I think we need to.
Well, he's, he still has the floor, so he could do whatever he wants to do.
Well, you have to second it before anyone can dismiss the motion on me. Is that correct?
Unless he's still talking, so.
Let's get a clarification from the county.
Well, he made a motion.
Yeah.
But he's still speaking.
Somebody, I was still speaking until somebody else, you know, interrupted me, but that's okay.
You made a motion, and then go speak some more to see if you really want to make the motion?
Yeah.
Just for housekeeping purposes.
One of the things that I want to make sure of, that, you know, if we have an opportunity with an individual being in the city, or individual being in Putnam County, that could come in and serve as interim manager, that we'll look at all of our options. And just wanted to make sure that we have exhausted, you know, all of our options as well.
Well, I haven't looked, my, the obvious thought for me was, knowing that Mr. Bush was a city manager that was in town, that had served, was familiar with the city. That was really the only place that I've looked, outside of looking internally at this point. But I can say that I wouldn't have a problem with Mr. Bush being brought on as a consultant and Mr. Reynolds being brought on as the interim either. Either way, I think we're gonna get the same results. So, I mean, you got a motion at this point, so I guess before we move any further, it'd be a matter of, you know, and in, in thinking through it, I guess we'll wait for you to second, and then I'll kind of tell you what my thoughts are.
Well, and my point is, I think if we had any other out there, they would have came forward to one of the commissioners by this time, because they know that we were making this appointment as well. So I'm assuming that there are none that are interested. So I will make the motion that we appoint Mr. Bush as interim manager.
Is there a motion on the floor, is there a second? Somebody has to.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second, is there any discussion? And as you were speaking, this is the only thought that came to mind with me. If we find ourselves outside of the sixty-day window with Mr. Bush appointed as the interim, then we will revisit this, and we would find ourselves in a position to revisit this situation. If we brought Mr. Bush on as a consultant, as a consultant, then if we had an interim in place and we needed additional time, because Mr. Bush is truly retired, and he's made it clear that it would be a short-term visit, if in fact this is the way the commission went, then we wouldn't need to take the additional action at some other point.
But you've got issues all the way around.
With Mr. Reynolds' resignation, right.
So you may, you may not be able to cover all your potential eventualities right now. You may, you may just need to-
Because his resignation right now is set to come up before the sixty-day period.
Right. And that's my question. How would we deal with knowing that he may transition out? What are we gonna do to make sure that we're still, the ball can still keep rolling? Or how quick are we gonna try to appoint a new, an actual permanent city manager? How quickly are we planning to make this happen, being that we have all of these different things that, you know, may be transpiring within those, within these next sixty days?
One of the things that I see my responsibility would be, would be to assist with the advertising and finding of a new city manager. That would be ongoing, and hopefully it won't take terribly long.
Well, my concern, my question would be to Matt, in his true interest, and do you really, you don't know which way you're going right now, if that's what I'm understanding, even with the help of Mr. Bush?
I don't, I just, I don't want to see the city suffer if I were to leave. The events of last Thursday kind of, kind of changed, definitely changed things quite a bit, because the plan was, I was, you know, finish the annual financial statements, they generally always finish end of March. Budget process starts in mid to late April, after we've got six months of information. That's kind of a window I had to make a transition out, give the city manager enough time. Now that that's changed, I don't want to leave the city and leave the city in behind. So fortunately, the other opportunity I had, they are, they are flexible, so, but yeah, it's, it's an ever-changing situation. So at this point, you know, I care about the city. Born here, raised here, so I want to see the city do well.
I mean, because my concern was if we wanted to move you into the interim city manager's position at this point in time. I mean, I would just like to know what your true interests were, if it seemed like you're still straddled at this point in time, even though that offer is on the table. So I would like to know, you know, it sounded like you just explained to me that you're still not clear as to which way you want to go. Even though it's been offered, you're still saying that you're gonna be moving into that other role because of the flexibility is there with other opportunities?
Maybe, maybe not.
We're trying to make some, we're trying to make some real hard decisions. We got some critical positions that need to be filled. We have Mr. Borum here, not Mr. Borum, but, sorry, Mr. Bush, who's, who's coming on board to help aid us in that process. And, you know, we don't like to, I don't, I don't feel good juggling things around a lot. So I guess, based on what you're saying, is it'll depend on what you're saying as how, which way I want to go with that, so.
I would, over, over the period of time that Mr. Bush will be here as a consultant or interim city manager- or interim city manager, um, I, I envision myself determining whether I, I feel comfortable and capable of doing the city manager's position and, and whether I would.
Apply for.
Apply for that position.
Well, now, yes, yes, I thank you for that.
So, hopefully that.
That makes sense. Yeah, that clears it up.
That, I, I'd like to say that gives him a chance to, to observe and go along with him and, and with his knowledge, pick up on some of the things that we have. We have a brand-new commission almost and we are looking at doing wonderful things for this town. Some things that, trying some things that have not been done before and looking at a much younger, um, commission. I'm looking for wonderful things to happen to us and I don't want us to slow down now. The momentum has started and we have a lot of things on the table and with youth and wisdom, we ought to be able to, for the next two or three months, to, to pull it off. And if Matt would like to put in, uh, his application to, um, apply for the job of being city manager after the period of time here, then that would be wonderful too. So, we just need to, to get somebody in place now. We don't wanna overload Matt either. Matt is a young man with a family. He, he needs to spend some time with, with a family. I know he loves his town, but jobs can be really stressful and we wanna make sure that we take care of all our people like we should.
Any other comment or discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Boren?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Welcome aboard again.
Feels like I went through a time warp.
You might have. Mayor, have we started the advertisement for what we want in a, a new city manager?
No, ma'am, and that was something that, um, I've, we've not done anything at this point. I think the only position that's actually being advertised right now is the finance director position. Um, and I, I guess we would need guidance from the commission, um, as it relates to.
I'm really, um, with the recent resignation, it, it bothered me. Um, whatever, however they, whatever the reasoning behind it, um, being that it happened at this present time, it kinda bothered me. And I think it's something that we need to address immediately. Um, and I don't think we need to go another week without trying to identify how we want to address these issues. Um, being that we are not trying to overload Matt with anything, being that he's losing basically two people, he's gonna be overloaded anyway. So, as quick, the sooner that we, uh, can get somebody in to work up under him, that he can, he can, you know, give them the knowledge that he has, I think the city will be in a better position at this point. I don't think we're in that position. I think we're still operating at a negative. Um, being that we, we just appointed a city man, I mean, our city manager. However, I think at this point, we need our city manager to go ahead and start working on our behalf and help us establish how we want to, um, address the three potential vacant, um, uh, vacancies. Being that one of them is our IT, um, that's serious. If something was to crash today or tomorrow, who would it fall on? Matt. So, again, we, we saying that we don't wanna overload him, but I feel that he's seriously gonna be overloaded. And he, being the kinda person that he is, he's gonna let it all come on him. And I don't want that to happen. So, we need to leave today with the plan of how we're gonna address those vacancies, um, to get those vac- um, vacancies filled.
Right. And, and just so you know, we've had some conversations today as it related to interest in some of those positions. Um, we do think that it's necessary to move forward, advertising those. No one wanted to make that call without speaking to the commission first. Um, I also think that for housekeeping purposes tonight, we need to, um, give direction on the salary for Mr. Bush, 'cause that wasn't included in the motion, so that that part of it's taken care of. Um, and it gets us where we need, it gets us where we need to be from a housekeeping point. Um, and then we can get the city, we can get the city attorney to draft the contract necessary to get that stuff in place.
Before we jump on salary, I'd like to say something. I noticed, uh, since the year started, we've had some people who resigned. I, I would like to see us pull everybody that works for the city into maybe price margin one day and let them come in and talk to us as city commissioners. I think that they need to know that they have the support and their jobs are secure. Um, we're getting crazy reasons for people leaving and we've had a bunch of rumors and misunderstandings. And for people to understand how I feel about how they work for us, I think it would be a good thing to do, even if we had to go department, department to department. We need to talk to everybody now. It seems that rumor has, has started a bunch of crap and they, they wanna make sure that they do have a job. So, if, if you all will think about it, I think at some point in time that we should just have a meeting with employees and get to know them and shake their hands and talk to them and let them know how, that we're concerned about them and keeping our city going and doing as well as possible.
And I, I've had a chance to talk to one of the employees from finance that resigned, um, and she'd been a long-term employee here. Um, and she indicated, and I asked her point-blank, did last week's events have anything to do with her resignation? And she said absolutely not, something she'd been planning for a while. And she just hated that the timing of it, they would mention her in the same sentence with what went on last week. Um, but I, I do think that there is an opportunity. We spent a little time here last week talking to, um, employees at City Hall going around from department to department to let them know that this wasn't, you know, that this wasn't something that, um, was a, wasn't ever a current event. It wasn't a witch hunt, um, and that, um, you know, it was an isolated event. Um, and so I, I think most employees, um, they responded pretty, you know, pretty effectively. We spoke with the department heads to assure them of the same thing during our pre-agenda meeting today. Um, and they were, they, they seemed to be pretty sure there weren't any, any concerns that were voiced at that time. So, I, I think that, um, you know, and we talked about our visioning and, and our workshops and, and having a retreat where we get an opportunity to sit down with our department heads and start to have the candid conversations and the team-building exercises. So, I think those are all things that are out there. Um, but that's where we are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To address, I guess to address, uh, Commissioner Campbell's question of his concerns, I think once we've pointed, appointed a city manager, I think it's, uh, what we do, what's to be done now about replacing staff, I think that it's up to him to give that direction to the staff rather than this commission do so.
Correct, correct.
Uh, so, I don't, I think what this commission has to be concerned about today is the road to getting a new city manager. I think, uh, there's already, uh, uh, RFP out for a new police chief. And I don't know whether we've got any, anybody to actually, uh, uh, sign it forward or not, but that would be left up to the city manager as well.
It wasn't advertised yet. He sent out recommend, he emailed recommendations to us in an email, but I don't, but it was never advertised.
Okay, 'cause I know he sent out, I know I've read something.
He sent the suggestions for the language out, but he never, but it was never, that position was never advertised yet.
So, I, I would think that, that even with that is that, uh, I didn't have too many issues with that anyway, but I think that that could be provided on the street, uh, for a new police chief to come in so we can start that search as well. Uh, city manager start that search, because that, that, that appointment, that would be a recommendation that would be coming from the city manager. And I don't think that we're gonna be able to appoint a new police chief in two months. I think that it's gonna take us, that it's gonna take that long just to weed through all the applications, if we have a lot of applications to have. But I think what this commission has to be concerned about though, is the road that we're going to take to find a new city manager.
I, I wanna say that. I would like us to wait to, to, to look for, uh, new police chief. We just said we were using those funds to pay and it needed to wait for a year. I, I think our police department is working well right now and the people seem to be happier down there where they are. And we need to make sure that we have enough money to take care of everything else. And they said if we did not go into hiring a new chief at this time, we'd have enough money to get Mr. Simble off our, our backs. So, I think that that's something we can wait for. I have sat here for three, three city managers. We, when Mr. Bush left, we hired Woody from within and then the, the next time we advertised for it. And you know, it took a little time with the, with the advertisement of it. And I think that we do need a, a city manager, um, to start to look for it. And I do think it's gonna take time. It was a little lengthy process, 'cause once they sent it out, they had people, I think they, they had a, a, a large number of people who applied and they brought it back to what, fifteen? And then down to three and then the commission, um, interviewed. So, it does, it's a process that takes a little while to find the right person. And, and a three-month period, a two or three-month period will probably be what we, be what we need to, to get that done.
Yeah, I think the commission actually started the interviewing process at fifteen.
Yeah.
But, uh, and, but, but, but you're right. And, but I think that, you know, we need to set that process and if we're going to use the process that we've used before, and I don't know what the commission is thinking. Uh, I know we actually brought in Range Rover brokers and all, a part of that process as well. And we wanna make sure that, I guess, that we actually say, uh, state the process that we're going to actually use, uh, with, uh, our search for city manager. Uh, I like the Range Rover process. I like to have the Range Rovers involved and whatnot and because.
You need to tell them who Range Rovers are.
Pardon me?
Tell them who the.
They are a search, very.
Headhunter.
Head, headhunter, that go out and look for city managers. And, but I like, I like that process because it gives them opportunity, even though you may have local individuals. Uh, and you know, you know, because we know the local individuals and whatnot, it kinda skews it in their favor with us. But it have, gives us a different, it gives us a unique, puts us in a unique position where we don't actually get involved until that number's went up down to an, an average one number. But also, we have the opportunity to bring back and push individuals back on the list, but we would like to see them there as well. So, it's not like we screen-lined and just hand it over to the range, uh, to the headhunters and that's it.
And I guess the question, so you, you felt that the process that you employed the last time was actually a beneficial process?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
I was telling, I was asking Campbell, would he like to say something? But we can't, no, everybody fussing. We can't talk to each other anywhere but here. So, if you guys got something to say, say it so we understand how you all feel about what needs to be done in the process.
Did you feel like the process that you employed before was a beneficial? Was it, was it, did you, what were your thoughts on that process that you used the last time?
Well, it looked like we made a big mistake with that process.
No, 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 we, we used that process twice.
Hold on, hold on a second.
We used the process twice. We used it when we hired Mr. Borton and we also used it when we hired Mr. Simble. So, we used it twice.
Ma'am, I, this is my suggestion with it. Um, we look at what we've done before. We look at other cities that may be involved in the Florida legal cities that have recently, um, had to go through the process of hiring a city manager. Look at the process in which they went through to see if it's something that we can take from, um, and kinda utilize here. Uh, it's one thing when we keep doing the same thing and we may keep getting the same results. So, we're trying to kinda steer away from that. So, being that we're trying to steer away from that, we definitely have to look at other methods. And I think one of the better methods to do is utilize our Florida legal city to, um, help us and, you know, lead us in the right direction.
City managers, unlike Mr. Bush, I think he stayed there thirty-some years. How many, Mr. Bush?
One or thirty.
Yeah. Uh, city managers don't usually last that long. They only last, no, statewide, if you look at, at how long city managers stay in positions in cities, it's a, it's a large turnover. And, but, uh, Commissioner Campbell said maybe a good path for us to follow because somebody else has done it and we can get some leadership. I just wanna make sure as we look to do it, that the people who live here with us have the opportunity, they have a hands-up, they have the opportunity to put in for it if they qualify for it. And that we look at it, because we've had, um, Simble who never moved here, who promised to move here and never moved here. We need, if you're gonna be in, in a leadership position in this town, you need to be here. And we want to make sure that whoever we get is going to live in the city limits of a lifetime.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion? Do we, do we need any action at this point as it relates to how we're gonna deal with the search? My suggestion is that we've got a commission meeting coming up next week. We just appointed a new interim. Uh, we can have the, everyone can speak to Mr. Bush. Um, and we can have something presented by next week as to how the search will take place. I, I would think that that will give everyone an opportunity to kinda assess options as it relates to what's going on.
The other thing, Mr. Bush has done this before, helped us search for, um, search for a new commissioner as he exited. And he, he might, we might wanna ask him some questions that might help we, help us to decide on which way we need to go.
Yes, Commissioner. One of the first things I would see myself do is report to the commission on exactly how we're gonna handle these questions.
Right. Yes, sir. Alright.
So, can we put that on the, on our agenda for Thursday, next Thursday night?
Madam Clerk?
I will reprint the agenda, add it under, um, it'll be new.
Right.
Nice. Yep, we're gonna talk about salary?
We were, that's the last part of what we have and I, I think we need a motion, uh, for salary. Based upon the calculations that I had at the seventy-five hundred dollar a month figure, if we broke it down to weekly, it came up to seventeen twenty-four.
Mr. Bush, I know you could rattle that right off your head.
Roughly seventeen, seventeen hundred and twenty-five dollars. If we use the four point three five as the, as our, as our weeks in per month.
Well, Mayor, I think that you have looked at it and, and looked at it, how to fix our budget. And maybe you need to sit down with our attorney, Mr. Bush, and come back to us with the, at, at our meeting and make a recommendation to us on which way we should go. Can I make a motion to that effect?
Seventy-five hundred divided by four and a half is sixteen six-six in repeating, so, I mean.
It's like four point three five per month.
Fee of seventeen fifty, it would just depend on how many weeks there are in each of the months. March, there's four Fridays. April, there's four Fridays. Four weeks for those.
So, seventeen, seventeen fifty would be the, the weekly.
For eight weeks.
For eight weeks.
Seventy-fourteen thousand.
And I, I guess, what, and I guess in that motion, we're gonna start, we're gonna start on, what am I gonna start? Tomorrow, Monday? With Monday?
Monday's Friday.
Monday's Friday, or yesterday?
The next meeting is next Thursday night.
Next Thursday.
We visit between then and then, uh, we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
We, we've got that reception coming up for the mayor.
Yeah, tomorrow night. You could, you could start tomorrow in that way. That would be, uh, one, one Friday in this month. And then, uh, April thirtieth is a Thursday. So, you could contract on that Thursday and that, that would be eight full weeks. I'll jump in.
There we go. That's fine. That's fine with me. Any?
Um, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion, uh, to move forth and have the interim city manager, uh, Mr. Allen Bush.
Correct.
Um, and his, uh, salary be at.
And his salary be at seventeen-fifty per week, starting tomorrow, which is the sixth, I believe, March sixth, two thousand and fifteen, for a duration of eight weeks.
Second. This is motion, this is motion on Florida's second. Question's been called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries five zero. City manager report. We've got administrative reports. Does anybody have anything to add?
I have, I have a couple of things. I have talked to Congresswoman Brown's office, and I asked her to have our commission come over so that she can meet the newer people here. They're in an election now, and her staff says after election, they will set us up with a date that will advertise so that we can get to know our Congresswoman and make sure she knows what we're doing and what we need. The other thing is Angel Duquesne is a resident of Preston City, but I have been talking to her, and she has retired from a company that has done business with China and in China. And in talking to her about several things, she said that they might be interested in sitting down and talking to us about doing some things here in Palatka. She called the other day, and if you all want to hear the message, because I didn't want to get it mixed up. Anybody in the audience can hear it on my phone too, because I don't want you to think you're doing anything wrong. But she would like to have a date in April that we might sit and that she could get those people to come in here. I think she's trying to bring some of the people from China here or her person that she works with here. I think she said he lives in Arkansas, to look at possibilities of helping us do stuff that would help move the town forward financially. So if you all on Thursday would check your calendars and pick a couple of dates or call Dicky, and we figure out a couple of dates that we can get to her as soon as possible for a meeting in April, they would like to set that up. The other thing is that they have an international, we have an international committee with the Florida legal cities that I sit on, and the depart, the city of Orlando's top floor is an embassy, and they have a number of countries there. I would like to get with my person that does stuff for, believe for us and get us appointments to go over and visit those embassies to see if there was any financial things that we can do with them, that we could start doing some international business. And if you all want to do that, if you let me know at our meeting time next week, I will approach them when we go to Tallahassee and see if the league will help us set up time just to go and find out possibilities for us to do international business.
Anything else?
One other thing. You know, we've had, we've been looking at the urban service boundary for quite some time, and, you know, I'd like to really see us get moving on that. You know, we, you know, we provide a lot of services, you know, for individuals throughout, you know, in our surrounding communities, you know, and plus the fact it gives an opportunity to serve those to legal, I guess, I want to say legal a bit, but to serve those individuals also in our, within our reach.
Logically.
Yeah, logically, rather than, rather than serving them by accident and that kind of thing, because, you know, and, and one of the things that I think we need to make sure that happens, the individual that receives services from the city actually paid for those services and whatnot. And, and, and we've got a private department that has an ISO rating of two, and if they serve those individuals, one of the things they're going to see is a reduction on their, on their insurance. And I think we need to really, really start talking to the county, start those conversations with the county, so that we can get either have some dialogue to try out where we're actually going with that, because that's been on the table now. In fact, Mr. Bush probably was city manager when we first started talking about the urban service boundary as well. So I really like to see us get that off, get it off the table and get it, and get it in all of our hands to wherein we can actually start moving forward with that, with the, with the county as well. One other thing, too, is, you know, and I've had the conversation with Mr. Griffin as well, and I know money's tight. I really know money's tight, and it is, it is. We don't have, we don't, we don't have what we don't have. But one of the things that we're doing, we're doing some, you know, they're doing a tremendous amount of work down on the riverfront. And one of the things that I want to see, I want to make sure that we take care of what we've been blessed to have down there, and the maintenance. We need to make sure that we maintain those facilities and the facilities that, you know, that we're going to have as well. And, and he has indicated he just doesn't have the personal mill to take care of it like it ought to be taken care of. And I think that's one of the issues that we need to address as well, because it makes no sense to have that asset, and it looks good for a year, six months, and then it begins to look like trash, you know?
Right.
We're not being good stewards when we do that.
Right. And I would say, just to kind of piggyback off what he said, I've also had the conversation with Jonathan, Mr. Griffin, as well as some of the individuals that work up under him. And I even offered to come out and actually do some work, because it hurts me to see that they're trying to do their best, and there seems like the best is not good enough. So that's one thing. I'm with Commissioner Norwood on that to see if that's something that we can definitely address quickly as well.
And I'll tell you, we took a ride yesterday, and I can tell you, they're on top of it as far as what they can do, their stretch with the human resources that they have at this point. I had an opportunity to ride with him and Mr. Douglas yesterday, and they were, and they had extensive dialogue about some things that they were doing down at the riverfront. So I can tell you that Jonathan has actually been working on that extremely hard at this point, and I do think that it's something that we need to look at as far as giving them some help. So, and we've, and we've talked about that in our, in the staff meetings as well. So I think he's doing the best with the least at this point. So, you know, it's a commendable effort, and we just need to do what we can to support him.
But I think that we would, we should require it to be a certain standard. We appreciate, I appreciate all the effort that he's putting in. I appreciate what the staff is currently doing. They're doing everything they can possibly do. But I think that we have to make a commitment to maintain it at the level and to make sure the standard is set for what we want, what we want it to look like. And if that means giving him extra resources, then we need to do.
Yeah, sure. And we can definitely look at that. And I think that's something that we look at, and that kind of segues into, I guess, my report. We were, we were looking at the workshops that we talked about doing. We tentatively had the workshop for the Riverfront Project, for lack of any other term, and the economic development director. We were going to do those as a joint workshop scheduled on the twelfth. The chamber, we were looking at having the chamber, the restaurateur from Nippers, Mr. Lagacy, speaking with the church, trying to get all the interested parties to come forward and be a part of that workshop so that we could have some extensive dialogue. The chamber indicated that they would be in Jacksonville in a training or something on that day, so the twelfth is not going to work for us. We came up with an alternative date.
They have agreed to the sixteenth, the following Monday.
If everyone's available on the sixteenth, then we can try to make sure we can get everybody involved in that.
What time do we have to be in Tallahassee on the seventeenth and eighteenth?
Eleven, I think it's at eleven-thirty.
Eleven o'clock in the morning?
Well, the meeting starts, I think, at eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty.
The, we go to the following Monday. They've agreed to that.
So, question is.
I like the sixteenth. I was just, if it's, if it's, is it going to be doing the, what's going to be.
Let me do the question.
We're thinking five, five-thirty.
Well, we just have to get up and go that morning, early morning to get to Tallahassee.
I guess the question is, what work is, what's the earliest at? That you guys will be.
That you guys.
I can be there. Let me know what time. We can be there.
When is the, on the sixteenth?
On the sixteenth. I see earliest that you could be there.
Because I had planned on leaving the sixteenth at evening, but late two hours later. I can, I can assist with that. I don't have a problem with that.
Let me suggest then that we do a, can we do a one, two o'clock?
I'll tell you in a second.
Can y'all do it?
On the sixteenth, right.